All right, the first order of business is the minutes of July fifteenth. Anybody have any comments on or changes that are needed? I didn't see anything that was missed.
Right, I'll move their approval.
I'll second.
Second, but Donna, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, minutes are approved unanimously. Okay, the first order of business is a public hearing. Could you read the call?
Okay, application nineteen thirty-seven of Julie Christensen, Agent Nevin Christensen, owner, for a special exception pursuant to Article Seven, Section A dot seven to operate a summer day camp Monday through Friday, nine AM to one PM for seven weeks each summer with an enrollment limited to one hundred campers per session on the property located at Seven Shingle Mill Road, assessors map B eleven, block four oh four, lot ten, zone R forty.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to tell us?
Good evening, my name's Lou George, I present Nevin and Julie Christensen, they're the owners of Seven Shingle Mill Road in Simsbury, and we're here to seek an approval for a special exception for the day camp that occurs only in the summer. It has gone on for a number of years, we're trying to bring this into compliance. It runs from the end of June, basically through mid-August, it runs for seven weeks. They have one-week sessions and approximately a hundred campers per session. The, under Article Seven, Section Seven, is a special exception for a daycare facility which is allowed within a residential zone, this is a residential zone, it's a farm, and this day camp is most closely akin to being a, under the day camp special exception, so it's been brought under that provision after discussing it with staff. We don't have a site plan, the farm and the way it's existed has existed for a number of years, there's nothing that's going to change with regard to this application on the farm, we went over that with staff and I believe they've recommended that you are allowed under Article Five, J three, to modify the requirement for a site plan, so we're asking that, we waive that, the only, not issue but concern would be the parking lot area which is more than large enough to handle this, it's drop-off, ninety-nine percent drop-off, the parking lot has, if you measure it out, seventy to eighty spaces, and if you look at the square footage, somewhere between thirty-five hundred and four thousand of usable square feet for the day camp, and at five hundred, it's only like nine spots that would be required, other than that, there's really no issue with regard to the site plan as it's used. The benefit of the day camp is for the community, it brings in a lot of campers between probably five and fourteen years old that live the day in the life of the Christensens. And they learn, and they learn how it is to work on a farm, they do various activities depending on their age group between, you know, five and fourteen. And with that, we're seeking an approval of this special exception to allow this to occur during the summers.
Okay. Of course, in a special exception, a public hearing, we're going to ask everybody to ask whatever question they have, then the public gets a chance, and then after we close the public hearing, we can consider the application for approval. So at this point, commissioners have questions?
No, just to clarify, the camp is Monday through Friday, nine to one.
Yes.
Like you said, it's mostly just drop-off for the kids.
Yes, I think the parents are very happy to leave the children in the capable hands of the Christensens for four hours.
Exactly.
I got a great camp.
It's a very popular camp in town.
I just have a question about how the drop-off happens, is the in and out indicated with signs and do you have to park and go get your children, or?
There's, there's one driveway off of Shingle Mill.
Can I respond to that?
Sure, if you want, yeah.
Okay.
We have a couple more copies of this map.
This is Nevin Christensen.
Nevin, can you tell us who you are?
Nevin Christensen, forty-four West Mountain Road, owner of Atlantic Farm.
Thank you.
There's a bigger map, this is the parking lot, West Mountain Road, Shingle Mill Road, people enter from Shingle Mill Road through this driveway.
Okay.
There are seventy-six to eight parking spaces that I paint white lines so they can park exactly where they need to park. Our nurse that greets the children comes down to the bottom of this area, the walkway, and checks them in, so each child is checked in by the nurse. When we built the pavilion up here, we designed it so people from the parking lot could see where their children were walking, and that's where a lot of the activities takes place in a pavilion that's not on this map.
Okay.
So, and there has, in thirty years we haven't been doing this, there has not been a backup of track of accidents anywhere there.
Great. They sign out too.
Yeah.
That's fine.
We can ask the obvious, do you have experience?
Only thirty years.
Wow. Well, and actually to clarify on that, and you provided us with Connecticut license.
Yes, she has all the licenses and permits, and they were, they were attached.
They were, they were with what we received.
The USDA, Armstrong Valley Health Institute, and the State of Connecticut.
Any other questions of the commission?
Nope.
Kevin, no? Okay, does anyone in the public want to speak to this application?
Marshall Epstein, forty-one East Sweet Dog Street.
It's probably the best camp in Connecticut.
Here's the favor.
All my grandkids are gone, all my nieces, nephews, everyone knows this camp.
Thank you.
And then they come up and hang in a job with us.
Thank you, Nevin. Marshall, anyone else? Okay, Mr. Second.
All right, I move that we close the public hearing for application nineteen thirty-seven.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carries five to nothing. Okay, public hearing is closed. The next application is nineteen thirty-five of Koa Nuyen Huffman Auto Group for a signed permit and site plan amendment. And this is for the Pho Farm Vietnamese Restaurant along the property at what used to be Munson's Chocolates over by Best Buy. Okay, can you?
All right, good evening, Commissioner, and everybody. My name is Kua Nguyen, and I am a proposed restaurant owner of Pho Farm for the forty-four Albany Avenue Street. And today I'm here to ask you for your approval for the new restaurant, which is our second restaurant, and I think this is a rate addition to the town. I think if you are familiar with Vietnamese food, you will know it's good for, you know, it's known for good food and light and tasty and, you know, and considered a very healthy food, and so it would be a good thing for the customer in town. And so that's why I'm here and asking for your approval for it.
Now, you have another restaurant?
Yes, it's in Windsor Lot, it's called Pho Seventy-Five, so this is a different name.
Oh, okay.
This is, we plan to expand more, and the Pho Seventy-Five been taken by someone else at different stake, and so we couldn't go, so we want to go different names so we can hopefully do nationwide with it.
Oh, good, good. Questions of commissioners?
So this is the restaurant and the sign approval then, right? And the lighting over the sign is already there?
That was my question.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I think staff said it's just a change of use, basically, there's no, nothing outside the restaurant that's changing.
The only real change outside is that sign, there was a sack replacement from, this was the Munson Chocolate location, which ironically, the commission, when the Munson Chocolate was first approved, was approved as retail use, and if it was approved as a food, a restaurant use such as this gentleman, he wouldn't be before the commission tonight, would have been liked to like, but the commission at the time classified Munson's Chocolate as retail, that's why he's here tonight, otherwise, like I said, it would be food and retail.
So if he had chocolate mints after dinner, we'd all be okay. Okay, any comments?
The outdoor, the outdoor dining would, is acceptable by, is that something that Fire Marshal or somebody else covers that?
So, and the outdoor dining is beneath the existing overhangs there, so in, there was, it's sort of set up where, it's not creating an issue from a fire code standpoint of blocking the entrances, these plans were shared with Kevin, and he's fully in support of the change of use, both interior but with the tables that are underneath that overhang.
Great. Thank you.
The door stays the same and?
Yeah, the outside would be the same, nothing can change.
Kevin, comments?
What's the seating capacity in there?
The seating is about sixty, I think including the outside, roughly around seventy-seven, seventy-eight.
Including the outside?
Including the outside.
Any questions or comments? Someone like to make a motion, attachment A has a?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion to approve application nineteen dash thirty-five of, I don't know if I'm going to say your name right now. Kua Nuyen. Agent, agent for Huffman Auto Group, property owner, for a signed permit and site plan amendment for change of use to accommodate the proposed restaurant, Pho Farm Vietnamese Restaurant along, on the property located at forty-four B Albany Turnpike. The approval of the site plan amendment is subject to the following conditions for approval. Number one, an administrative zoning permit is required for the change in use and the installation of a new sign, and number two, proposed signage is not to be internally lit.
Second.
Second by Kevin, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carries five, nothing, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Pho Seventy-Five is a good restaurant, I've been there, thank you.
Oh, great.
Good time for Pho.
Okay, next application is nineteen dash thirty-six. Signed permit for Liberty Bank on the property located at nine eighty-one Hot Meadow.
In the rear, I did the same thing.
So say, okay.
Okay, my name's Robert Kuspa, I'm with National Sign Corp., presenting our proposal for the Liberty Bank signage conversion over from Simsbury Bank. And if your slides are in the same order as mine are, we have an awning on the rear of the bank. It's currently just a blue awning, it's going to be replaced with new fabric that contains the watermark of the flame from the torch from Liberty Bank, so it's very subtle, I think it's attractive. On the rear of the building, there's a new wall sign replacing the two wall signs that were on either side of the entrance, this is externally illuminated, the lighting is built into the framework, top and bottom, the lighting sits about three inches from the face, there's an, should be an example of the lighting effects in your package also.
So the lighting sits where? That was my question.
There's a border on the top and bottom of the sign, and the lights are built into that, so you can't see them, but they'll shine up or down onto the face of the sign.
Part of the frame, really.
Part of the frame, and I believe in your package you'd have this slide also, that there's a sample of a freestanding end of a building sign of how it looks at night.
Yep.
Because they've used these in other, in other places as well. Rather than having goosenecks hanging off the sides, you know. And the front of the building, the existing freestanding sign would just be replacing the panel, like-for-like size, the arm stays the same. It'll use the existing ground lighting. On the front of the building, there were two Simsbury Bank signs, one on either side of the door, those are being replaced just for the flame, the torch logos, and similar size. And then there's four or five directional signs on the property. Four directional signs, they're being reduced in size from what's currently there, the advertising that were on the Simsbury Bank signs are coming off, they just have directions, so they're each four square feet.
And those are wood or?
Aluminum.
They're aluminum, and they're not lit?
Not lit.
Okay. So the only lit, lighted sign is the one that's on the rear?
On the rear wall, yes.
That was my question.
Oh, and the ground lighting that's existing for the freestanding sign on this road.
Okay, questions from the commission? Any staff comments? Yes, I see that, so.
Number twelve, really, the only blue sign is noted as on a canopy off the rear, which is the logo that's going on that canopy.
Yep.
But maybe, Bob, could you just clarify one question I had, just noticed during your presentation, was the wall sign that's shown on W twenty-six, that's the one you're replacing two existing ones off the rear, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, it doesn't show there, but the drawing for the awning shows the existing signs on either side of the doorway, and then they were removed for the rendering of the wall sign. They should have left them on there, yes.
So they're getting rid of, there were two little signs there, and then they're getting rid of them.
And design review?
Design review should do a favorable, excuse me, a favorable recommendation on this application earlier this evening?
And just to confirm, that one sign that's on the rear is taking the place of those two, and it's within the square footage that's allowed, because that's the only real change?
So we're ready to make a motion?
I'll move to approve application nineteen thirty-six of Robert Kuspa, Agent Mark Spur and D O N Kathleen Kennedy, owners for a signed permit for Liberty Bank on the property located at nine eighty-one Hot Meadow Street. The approval of the site plan amendment is subject to the following conditions of approval. One, an administrative zoning permit is required for installation of signage.
Second.
Second by Donna, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five, nothing, it passes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
It was just a lot of pages. Me too.
Okay. Application nineteen thirty-seven of Julie Christensen, agent, Agent Christensen, owner for a special exception. Okay, comments or questions, guys? Donna?
Nope.
Kevin, Kevin, you okay? Any questions?
It's favorable, this is.
Watching YouTube.
We're trying.
Nobody else knows how to use this yet.
No, I was on YouTube before because I didn't know how. Glad I didn't make noise.
All right.
I'm in favor of this camp, it's a well-run camp and very highly regarded in town.
Okay, we got a staff report?
Nope.
Do you have a staff report? If the commission so wishes to choose so, there's actually two motions that will be required. The first motion that would need to be considered would be to waive the site plan requirements pursuant to Article Five, Section J three, and I do have a proposed motion for you if you choose to go that way, and then the second would be if you wish to approve the special exception, we're only recommending two conditions, just an administrative zoning compliance review application, and just a reminder that this does need to be filed in the land records.
Okay, right.
Well, I'll make a motion on the first one, I move to waive the site plan requirements pursuant to Article Five, Section J, because the proposed use does not necessitate the requirements listed in this section, insufficient information has been provided to the commission for review.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, it carries five to nothing, thank you. Now we can move to the.
All right, and then I will move to approve application nineteen thirty-seven of Julie Christensen, agent, Nevin Christensen, owner, for a special exception pursuant to Article Seven, Section A dot seven of the zoning regulations to operated summer day camp on property located at Seven Shingle Mill Road, subject to the following requirements, one, an administrative zoning compliance review application is required, and two, the special exception must be filed on the land records in the clerk's office in order to be valid.
I'll second.
Second by Donna, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, carries five, nothing, thank you very much.
Good thing you brought your attorney.
Sounds fun.
Okay, application nineteen thirty-eight, Simsbury Town Shops for text amendment, Simsbury zoning code to add a driving school as a use. Staff?
This has been advertised for a public hearing for the next meeting, so there's no action requested, it will be forwarded to the planning commission for their review at their next meeting.
So there's no action required?
No action requested, the commission has.
Public hearing is set for October seventh.
Correct.
Okay, application nineteen thirty-nine of Richard Rosenthal, Marshall Epstein, owner for a site plan amendment for a temporary liquor permit for a one-day event, Oktoberfest, on the property located at twenty-five East Sweet Dog Street, assessors map H fourteen, block one oh eight, lot three, zone R forty. Good evening.
Good evening, Marshall Epstein, forty-one East Sweet Dog Street, also owner of twenty-five East Sweet Dog Street, Rosdale Farms, this is an annual event that we have every year, I think the difference this year is that, under, I guess, the new stature for the state, is that they're doing it through their charitable organization, the Max Care, so they have to get a temporary one-day permit, and that's why I'm up here today, Rich is not in the state right now, so I said I'd come and present, so it's an annual event, it's one of the, it's our last event of the season, so it's kind of a, it's kind of the fall event that everybody looks forward to each year, and it's usually very well-attended, and I think it goes pretty smoothly every year, so I don't think there's any major concerns, I hope, so.
Any staff comments?
Nope, so you have a staff report in front of you, this is coming under our sort of new reg for the just a site plan amendment in accordance with Article Ten, Section Eight, Six, just granting of the temporary liquor permit for this temporary event, an administrative zoning compliance review would be required as a condition, and it's pretty straightforward.
So going forward, if we approve this, next year, they just come to you?
They just come to me, yep.
Unless there's some problem, and then she can refer it back.
To us, yeah.
Correct.
Comments, Kevin? Jackie?
So, for this, because it's just a one-time event, we don't need to go through all the other questions and hours of operation and all that?
Yeah, this is just for a charitable organization for their one-day liquor event, so this falls under that new reg that we adopted, I think, back in April, March, April, so it's different from our discussion we've been having about the agritourism regs, yep.
Nope, that was my only question.
But do we have limits on the time?
We don't.
We have what?
Limits on the time?
How late?
For all?
It's in the afternoon, it's over by four, I think, four, I think it's four, it's an afternoon event, it's not an evening event, no, so.
But that's for this event, they could come with others, but I thought we had some time limit on these.
We do want to.
We do, like eleven o'clock, ten o'clock, I think it is.
In the past, you've issued conditions of approval on some of the events to say, you know, eleven o'clock, cutoff time, eleven PM, or.
Ten o'clock during the weekend, weekday.
I'm good.
Why don't you make the motion?
I will make a motion. I will make a motion to approve application nineteen thirty-nine of Richard Rosenthal, agent, Marshall Epstein, owner, for a site plan amendment in order, in accordance with Article Ten, Section Eight point six of the Simsbury zoning regulations, to grant a temporary liquor permit associated with a temporary event, with the following conditions, one, an administrative zoning compliance review application is required.
Second.
Second by Kevin, further discussions?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carries five, nothing, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next item is Big Y, application nineteen forty, Tony Coppola, agent, would like to resubmit for a site plan amendment for the construction of a new retail grocery store.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready for me?
We are ready.
Great, thank you, for the record, my name is Guy Hesketh, I'm a licensed professional engineer and a principal at F.A. Hesketh and Associates, our corporate office is located in East Grandy, Connecticut, and our office helped prepare plans, much of the plans or many of the plans, and studies that were submitted as part of this application. Also as part of the application are some architectural drawings from Pepin and Associates, Ed Pepin is here also to speak, he's seated here, and then I do have with me this evening Tony Coppola and Chris Elliott from Big Y, if you have any questions regarding operations, between the four of us, I think we can handle that, or any other questions on the site plan. Just to give you a brief history, I've got, let me show you an overview here of what we're looking at, back in two thousand and twelve. We came before your commission in two thousand and twelve for a site plan and a special permit, and that included construction of, I think it was a fifty-four thousand square foot building, and then also a site plan approval related to that, and at that time we also came with the request for three special exceptions under your regulations, and that included a coverage requirement, under your regulations, you're allowed to have up to sixty percent coverage, we came in with a like fifty-nine point seven percent coverage, I think it was a fifty-nine point eight percent coverage. Your regulations allow for reduced-sized parking spaces, we came in for a special exception to allow a certain number of parking spaces reduced from the standard nine-by-eighteen size, and then also we had a special exception for the use as a supermarket, and it's my understanding that the special exception, special permit associated that was filed on the land records, and that is still valid. But the site plan portion of that application has since expired, since two thousand and twelve, so we're here this evening to resubmit, or to, I guess, I don't know if you say reactivate, or look for. or look for, seek an approval on the site plan. So back in two thousand and twelve, this is, this is the plan that we presented. And just briefly, just to let you know where the site is, this is the old Wagner Nissan portion, and there's an existing old barn that's out on the site itself. Site's comprised of four different parcels. I don't know if they've been all merged or not, that's something we're looking at right now. Big Y did acquire those parcels, they took title to them. Whether they're merged in the land records or not, we're still, our attorneys are determining, working with staff to figure out what the bottom line is with that. But the four parcels comprise about seven and a half acres in the aggregate. And it's located in the general business zone. What we're proposing is a fifty-two thousand square foot building. This is a rendering of the revised plan. It's substantially in conformance with the previous plan, and as Mike shows up on the, on the board here, the building that we're locating is in the same location as the previous building. It, the building itself is a little bit less wide, but it's a little bit deeper in the east-west direction. In order to accommodate that building, a total of about fifty-two thousand square feet, we had to push the front facade further towards Hop Meadow Street and reconfigure the parking to allow for that positioning of the building, the slightly different footprint. And the reason for that is that since two thousand and twelve, Big Y's built a number of these floor plans that work better for their operation. So it's substantially similar to what was done before, but internally, it's been a little bit reconfigured, and operations work a little smoother in this prototype that we have. So we put the new footprint, superimposed it onto the previous approved site plan. So it's substantially similar. We've got the main parking field in the front. We've got main access coming off of Hop Meadow Street through a signalized intersection. It still has the same divided drive that we had on the previous site plan. Has an entrance and exit with the dedicated right and left turn lane. Signalized intersection here. We have circulation where trucks would enter the site and come along the south side of the building, traverse around the rear of the building, head towards the skating center, and then back into the loading docks which are located here. And then upon exiting, would leave the site on the skating center drive located here. We also have as part of an entrance to the facility, what we call a dedicated right turn lane here, which allows traffic that's traveling south on Hop Meadow to turn right into the site. It's a one-way drive. Traffic is prohibited from exiting here, and left turn lanes into this from northbound traffic are prohibited. The reason for that is it does allow us to peel some of the traffic off and allow circulation into the site instead of using the main driveway itself. So we have on the site itself, as I mentioned, the signalized intersection of Hop Meadow, dedicated right turn lane. We're proposing a total of two-hundred-and-forty-eight parking spaces that are located, primarily the customer parking spaces located in the front. And then we've got spaces here which would be dedicated employee spaces. We also have some spaces along the south side of the building. These are, most of these spaces are the conventional nine-by-eighteen spaces, but we do have, along the perimeter of the site, we are proposing some reduced parking spaces. Your regulations do allow, and our special permit had granted us an exception to provide those. These are compact car spaces, they're smaller. You'll notice that in these areas where you see sort of a gray hatching, the surface treatment in those areas will be a pervious type of pavement, so it will allow stormwater to infiltrate into, through the pavement in these areas here. Sort of a low-impact design that we've incorporated into the design of the site. We're lucky here because the subsurface soils that are located in this part of town and under our site are primarily sandy in nature. It has a fairly deep groundwater table, and the soils are fairly permeable because it's a sandy material. If you envision at the beach, beach sand, when the waves come up, the water infiltrates into the ground, that's really what you have on these type of sandy soils. Groundwater has the ability to infiltrate into the surface, so hence we have these permeable parking spaces around the perimeter. And on this site, we've also incorporated on either side of the building, on the south side, on the north side. Mike, could you go to the grading plan? I think it's about two sheets up. Another one, yep. I think it might be that one there. What it does allow us to do is to take, yeah, here it is. We're proposing as part of our stormwater management system, there's a series of infiltration galleys on the south and on the north side of the building. And what those are, are underground chambers that provide a volume for storage of stormwater. We can take roof runoff, which is relatively clean, discharge it into some manhole structures that are attached to these underground infiltration units. If you think of it simplistically, like, sort of like a septic system underground, they're parabolic plastic structures that are ribbed that provide support. You dig a trench, put stone on the bottom, put these in, put stone around them, filter fabric on top, and it provides volume for stormwater for some retention, and then allows that stormwater to infiltrate into the sands. That's one of our components of our stormwater management system. The other one is this area here to the north. If you drive out there now, you'll notice there's some storm drains which are shown here in these dashed lines, gray lines here, that collect stormwater runoff from the parking area of the skating center and discharge it to a depressed area located in here. So sort of a stormwater detention infiltration basin that serves the skating center. We're going to enlarge that and take the stormwater runoff from our site. Anytime you develop a site and you create, or you generate an increase in impervious area, when it rains, there's more runoff associated with that, because the water that used to infiltrate into the ground when it was just grass or a field now runs off. So what you have to do is control that runoff so you don't end up having all that water rush out onto the street or the highway. So we're going to collect that stormwater with a series of stormwater drains around the perimeter of the site, and we're going to discharge it into this water quality basin. So we've got a storm drain system around the southern end, comes along the eastern edge of the project, and then circles around and discharges to this outlet here. And then the area behind the store and this, and portion of this area here will discharge through storm drains into the water quality basin. We've sized this basin to handle the maximum anticipated runoff from our site, so that we do two things. We control the peak rate of discharge so that our post-developed rate of runoff that leaves this pipe and connects to the state highway system is equal to or less than the existing condition amount of runoff that flows into that site. And we do that by creating a storage volume in this basin, and then we have an outlet structure. Picture a concrete box that sticks out of the bottom of this basin, and has a grate on top of it, and then it has a small hole in the side of it. So that small hole will only allow a certain amount of runoff into it, so it throttles back and controls the flow. And then, because it's sandy soil here, most of this water infiltrates into the ground and recharges the groundwater, so you're sort of mimicking the natural hydrologic regime of the site through multiple practices of infiltration that occurs here, the infiltration that occurs in these infiltration areas here, and then also around the perimeter of the site. So hydrologically, what we're trying to do is have a similar hydrologic infiltration rate post-construction as we do under the existing condition. And those are following D E P guidance, and that's what we have. Connecticut Department of Environmental and Energy Environmental Protection has guidance documents. So we've conducted a thorough hydrologic and hydraulic analysis of the site, which you have as part of your application, and what we're referring to, the stormwater management plan, which is a voluminous document that we've included. That was designed to follow not only your town engineers and your town planning and zoning reg, or zoning regulation standards, but also the Connecticut Department of Energy Environmental Protection. Management practices, best management practice for stormwater runoff, so we've met those. On our sheet L A one, if you can go back to that for a sec, Michael? Appreciate it. We have on sheet L A one, there's a zoning data table. Yeah, just go up a little, a couple more. Yeah, there's a zoning data table that includes... I don't know if this thing just quit working on me here or not, but, oh, there we go. There's a, the bulk requirements for the zoning table are located here, where we've got requirements for your zoning regulations as far as setbacks to the front yard, side yard, and rear yard. That's the location of the building relative to the front, rear, and side yards, and then also parking requirements. Your regulations require that parking spaces be so many feet from the side yards. We're demonstrating compliance with that. I do want to clarify for the record, and I was a little embarrassed about this this afternoon when I was preparing for this hearing. I did notice on our sheet L A one, if you look over here, you can see there's sort of two lines here for the property line. Our technician who prepared this map had taken our base map, which is in our drawing, and shifted it four feet. So we had a mis-dimension over here of eleven feet to the parking area when it's really fifteen feet, which is an interim requirement. I noticed that. I do want to submit to the record a clarification, just so you have it, that corrects that deficiency. And I want to testify to you that we do meet the bulk requirements. So I'll submit a copy of that to the record to staff, and that is sheet L A one. And I've labeled that base map shift revision oh-nine-sixteen-two thousand and nineteen. And I'll leave a copy of this for staff. And then I do have eleven-by-seventeen copies for the commission members, if you want to just take a look at that. Again, I caught that this afternoon, about an hour before the meeting, and I double-checked everything, and I wanted to make that correction, just to clarify the record, since we are submitting. Here's the revised plan. Do it my way, take it one pass, and I appreciate it. I do have extra copies here, if anybody's interested.
So, actually, it's actually fifteen?
Yes. Yeah, so the distance from the parking to the side yard setback is fifteen feet. It was marked as eleven on here, and again, if you notice the shift of that line, which is right there, that's like four-point-one feet. So fifteen foot is respected in that area, and the table reflects fifteen. This drawing shows it as being eleven feet, which is, which is an error, but the table shows fifteen feet. And again, I just wanted to clarify that for the record. So in our calculations also, there is no minimum frontage requirement, there's no minimum lot area. We do respect the front, side, and rear yard setbacks to buildings. The parking set requirements are met, and our building height requirements are met. Minimum floor requirements, and also, under the special exception, we were granted, I think, fifty-nine point eight percent impervious coverage, we're at fifty-nine point three, so we did follow them that parameter. Our parking was based on a combination, as was the original approval, of retail warehousing and office space. We did break that down, and our parking analysis indicated that we were required to have the, I think it's two-hundred-and-forty-seven spaces, we're at the two-hundred-and-forty-eight, so we do meet that requirement. And then for utility design, Mike, if you could show the utility plan? It's, I think it's about three or four sheets further down from that. One more. Yeah, utility services, we, we do have Aquarian Water located on Hop Meadow Street. We are proposing to connect to that. In two thousand and twelve, when we first approached Aquarian Water, there was some concern they had for trying to make a tie-in to the water main on the Hop Meadow Street. The reason for that is because part of that pipe was an older technology, either a transite pipe or cement asbestos pipe, which you don't want to really tap into because you may end up breaking the water main. So our preliminary discussions with them were to, were to tie into a water service that's coming off of the skating drive center. There is adequate water out there. We'll have to work out the details with Aquarian when they review the plans in detail. We do have adequate electric and telephone communication services that come up both Hop Meadow Street and through the right-of-way for the town parcel to the skating center. We'll connect into those utilities. We have gas service also, and sanitary sewer. Sanitary sewer is available on Hop Meadow Street. Our conversation with Water Pollution Control Authority indicate there's adequate capacity. Again, we'll need to apply for permits with them. This building and this facility will have full-service food preparation, which we'll require under building code and Connecticut D E E P requirements, installation of a grease trap for handling grease waste that are coming from the site. And essentially, any of the kitchen operations that take place in the different departments, they have five departments at Big Y that do generate grease waste, and those will be separately plumbed to an oil, a grease separator, which we're proposing to locate in the front of the store. Yep, there we go. And again, those, those will comply with the Connecticut D E E P standards, and then standards of your Water Pollution Control Authority. Grease trap area located here. Uh-oh. I can go to the old technology.
It's fine.
Let's see. Your regulations and state statutes also require that we provide a sediment soil erosion control plan. I don't know if I have that one plotted here. I don't, but I can, I can review it on the grading line because it's very similar. What the Sedimentation Erosion Control Plan is designed to do is protect discharges and release of sediments from the site during construction, and then also post-construction. There's a number of measures that are implemented. You have in your packet a plan that's labeled EC dash one as erosion control plan. And if we can grab that one, I can show you that. Essentially what it is, is we provide a number of erosion control devices that are implemented during construction. Those include a construction exit, which is a stone pad that's on the area of the site where construction equipment would exit the site to keep the transport of sediment so minimum. We also have along the perimeter, all down perimeter, or down gradient perimeter areas of the site. Yep, one more. Go slow so that, doesn't like that. Keep going down. All right, next one. There we go. Great. So what we have is a construction exit that we're proposing up here. We anticipate traffic will enter the site from skating drive to keep impacts at minimum along Hop Meadow Street. You'll see sort of a dark line here with, sort of like a line with an X on it, that's silt fence erosion control. That's designed on the, to put on the down gradient side of the site along the curb line. And what that is essentially, it's a black, non-woven, I'm sorry, black woven fabric that has wooden stakes every so many feet. You pound that in and key it into the ground to keep sediment off. We have areas where we've got slope construction going on, and back here, we, there's about a ten-foot elevation, elevation difference between the back pavement of our site and the parking lot for the skating center. We have obtained rights to grade on the town property back here, so we can make a grading transition between the two parcels. We're proposing a three-to-one grading transition. That will be topsoiled, seeded, and an erosion control fabric will be placed on that. And what the erosion control fabric is, is a, is a straw fabric-type material that has some plastic meshing on the upper and lower sides of that, stapled to the ground, and that prevents the, provides a couple things. It provides protection from the soil from getting dislodged, and then also it allows there some moisture for the seed to take, so that's, that's one of the technologies we're proposing.
Are you removing any, is there a great difference now, or are you cutting into where they are higher?
Yeah, we're going to be cutting into it in this area here.
Just a little bit?
Yeah, about ten feet or so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, in this, in this rear area here. Grading-wise, this, what the site does is, it, it's relatively flat along the front, and then where the old building was here, and then it has a gradual incline from there towards the skating center. What we've done is designed this site so that we can match about a ten-foot cut here, and then we've got fill here, so it's, it's a relatively balanced site, but we're going to have to fill the front portion in here. here and then make the grade difference on our driveway. If you notice, these lines here along the driveway represent elevation contours. So the closer these lines are together, the steeper the slope is. So we have about, I think it's about a 4% maximum of 5% pitch along the driveway as you come up here. So you come up the driveway, and there's a grade difference here of a few feet between this portion of the driveway and the parking area. The reason for that is in a grocery store, when you design your grading, you want to have a maximum of about, from the front door to the customer parking areas, you want to be about two, maybe two and a half percent grade. The reason for that is, and what that means, 2% grade is it's a two-foot elevation difference in every 100-foot horizontal distance. If you go any steeper than that, you know a cart can get away from you. The last thing you want to do is have someone come out here with their child in a cart, and they turn, open the trunk, and the cart takes off. So we designed these parking lots so that they're relatively flat, but you still need to have enough pitch to get the drainage off of them. So 2% is, 2 and a half percent's about the maximum. This is about a 2% grade through here. What that does is it requires us to have a grade difference between the road and the edge of our parking lot, which is on the order of about three feet or so. Some areas might be four feet. So what we're going to do to take care of that is we have a retaining wall. It's more of a decorative wall, so to speak, that we have located along the front of the sidewalk here. So we've created this sort of landscape feature where we have an elevation difference of a couple of feet from the top of the wall to the bottom of the wall, and then a sidewalk to create a streetscape and kind of give it a sort of a country feel here. And then in the back, we have a slight mound of earth and material here, and that's well-planted. So we sort of create a landscape feel to the site itself. We're proposing a sidewalk to come from this end of the site here on the edge of the drive across the front of our site, and then that sidewalk will continue to the edge of the skating center driveway. And then we have a sidewalk that'll come up the edge of the driveway here and provide pedestrian communication with the front facade and the sidewalk that's in the front of the building. And then another sidewalk in this area here that comes up on the edge of the wall, the wall starts here and goes south through a large landscaped area in the parking lot and then provides communication to the front of the building itself. So we've created a pedestrian-friendly corridor along the front of the store, essentially. And then we're proposing some pedestrian-level street lighting along here. There's a detail shown on your detail sheets, and the site lighting that we're proposing is same site lighting that you have in the center of town. If you go up here, there are the streetscape lights, the smaller ones, that's what we're proposing there.
We have two different types in town.
Yeah, in 2000.
Two different types. We have the Washingtonian and the Simsbury one.
Yeah, in 2000, I'd have to look at whatever you guys want, because we're going to, you know, we'll put in there, you know. And then we've got the, in the parking lot, we've got a number of lights here that are just the shoebox fixture type of lights that are. When we did this plan, I don't think LEDs were really, they're just kind of at their infancy, so we will definitely have LED lighting all along here. We don't have a full photometric plan submitted for the record. We would like to develop that with the architect integrating site lighting, and we'd like to have that as a condition of approval, that we prepare that map and then submit it to staff for review, because we don't have a complete photometric plan at this time. But that would be our intent, to meet your lighting requirements that are substantially identical to those that were shown on the previous approved plan, and then it'll be more modern now, we can use LED. And we'll put together a full photometric for that. Let's see. Yeah, drainage-wise, I kind of already touched base on that, I believe. As I mentioned, the stormwater management basin and the underground infiltration in this location here. Landscaping, if you can dial back a couple of sheets. My landscape architect put together, here you go, a detailed landscaping plan. It shows a combination of deciduous trees and coniferous trees or evergreen trees, a combination of trees and shrubs that are on the site. There's a full list of the plantings that are included on the landscape plan. He did ask me to relay to you that the previous approval had ash trees on it. And because, I guess, there's an ash-boring, some kind of beetle, I don't know, it was a green beetle. So he's, I guess the general trend now in landscaping is to not put that specific species on there, so he substituted, I think, I don't know if it was a locust tree that he substituted in for those. So he picks trees in the parking area that are, that grow well in that environment as far as the type of soils we have here in the parking area that provide plenty of canopy. And there's a number of trees that are typical to local species of Connecticut, maples and other species. Again, here's the list up here.
You had it over there, too.
Yeah, I think I had a picture of. This one, this one is the fall palette, as you can tell, is what he told me. It's got the trees, I think the maples are the ones that are shown in red, and then you've got some yellow and orange and stuff. So, yeah, so this is a rendering that he put together, and this was something very similar to what we had shown to design review on the previous submittal, talking about the different parking plantings and the streetscape plantings. You don't have this as part of your package, but I will leave this as part of the record. This was just a presentation material for design review, and if you wanted to see this. But in a nutshell, you can kind of look at the different colors here and kind of see what the landscape is proposed on the site. We were conscious of some screening, so in this lower portion of the site here, we put some pretty generous plantings in here. We also have a little bit of mounding going on here with our grading scheme. And we've got evergreens and deciduous trees clustered in here to provide a screening effect to this area here, which is sort of the utility area of our site. We have, the truck loading, as I mentioned, is in this area here. In this area here, we have the compactor. We have a generator, we have a transformer, and then we have what we call a power-secure piece of equipment. What the generator is, is in the previous application, Big Y had a whole-store generator. It was a much larger generator that was designed to power all the lighting, all of the cash registers, and in addition, all of the refrigeration and freezer equipment. What Big Y has done the last several stores is they've reduced the generator or generative capacity to something much smaller that basically is a life-safety generator. So what that does is it provides adequate lighting to exit the store. It keeps the sales area open, so if you're in the middle of a transaction, they can keep that going until they get you out of the store. They would not allow other customers to come in while that's going on, but if you're in the middle of a transaction, they want to get you out and keep you safe, well-lighted. And then what they do is they bring in now a trailer that has a generator on it. And what that allows them to do is instead of having a large generator at each facility, they have a certain number of these that they keep up at headquarters. And then if there's a power outage in a certain region, and their experience has been, usually you don't have a global power outage for all of their stores, but two or three or four stores maybe if there's a severe storm. They can move within a number of hours, they can move a generator to the site, they plug it in, they fire it up, and then the whole store's back it up and running. And what that does is, when you have a generator, especially a larger generator, they automatically cycle every so many days to make sure that they're working. Can be kind of loud. The smaller generators are much quieter, so when those cycle on, you don't get the loud noise from the larger generators. And all of that testing and stuff is done off-site at their headquarters. They can maintain these things, have a team that maintains them, so they're always ready to plug in whenever they need them. So that's what we're proposing for this store here, is a generator plug-in over in this corner of the site. And again, we have some landscaping around this whole area to try to protect that.
Do you have a walkway proposed to connect to?
The sidewalk?
Yeah, in the back corner, left?
Yeah, yeah, right up in here. What this came about is under previous approval, we put a placeholder in there because there's some question as to whether we could, there's a, I think there's a condominium location project over here that's been there for a number of years. We put a placeholder in that to allow a connection for that, and the plan would be is to, we'd have to work with that owner and see how that participation would be to have that done. So we wanted to get that on a plan to show that. Matt Demore was one of the, represented one of the owners of Big Y, had agreed to that as part of the original approval. So we kept it on the plan here. So the intent is just to show that as to when that would get constructed. Again, we would have to coordinate with the adjacent landowners, but we do provide for that on the plan, for some pedestrian connectivity, as well as, again, connectivity here along the front of the store. Now, I did, I just noticed another thing that I'm kind of embarrassed about on the layout plan. The original one, we had some bike racks shown in the front, and we forgot to put them on this one, but our intention is to have the two bike racks on here so that when people come up with their bikes, they can come up in this area here, and we'll locate those on a location that's satisfactory to staff. We want to make sure that any pedestrians or people who are using the bike path, which is further, I guess if it was on this plan, it's probably down here, runs parallel Route 10, everybody knows where the bike path is. If somehow you can get from the bike path to here, we'll have a place for you to park your bike, you know? That's what we're thinking. That's kind of it in a nutshell for my presentation. Ed Pepin's got some rendering or some sample boards here and some renderings.
Do you have questions while you're still here?
Absolutely.
Do you have a site that shows it, you in relation to your neighbor, you know, the neighborhood sites?
Like a cross-section or something?
Well.
A bigger site.
Just you and, yeah, in relationship to the.
How about this?
Okay, so that is, that depicts the apartments. So the apartments aren't that far away.
Yeah, so, yeah, they got the apartments here, so here's our little path right here.
Okay.
So we could come up through here, and then, yeah, you could do some kind of connection in here.
Okay, that's why.
And then there's the skating center.
And then screening there, too.
Yeah, that's why we have the screening here, exactly.
Yeah.
So that we, you know, if there's any view here, all of these trees in the mounding here sort of blocks that view, which would be kind of in this direction here.
And your driveway aligns, it doesn't align with any driveway coming out from across?
Oh, over here?
Yeah.
Uh, no.
And what building is at your driveway?
Kane's, I think it's Kane's Market here, yeah.
Ironic.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, another thing on this, it's probably germane to the project, I'm not sure particularly for your purview, but this project required two actions from the state regarding highway touchdown and traffic. The Office of State Traffic Administration, OSTA, what that board or what that organization does is they review impacts to the area roadway based upon proposals. And that typically is if you have over 200 parking spaces or 100,000 square feet of footprint of your building, you're required to at least ask for a note or request for determination from OSTA. We went through the OSTA approval process, which required us to do traffic studies up and down the corridor, at intersections including 318, is it 315, which is over by the old Gemini's? And the skating driveway, obviously, and then up at further north, we have the intersection for Dorset Crossing. And then south, we have the intersection that I think went in about the same time we were doing this over on Hoskins, I believe. Our traffic study incorporates all of that background traffic and everything that was done for those projects. In fact, we did this intersection for both Hoskins and for the signal design for Hoskins and for Dorset Crossing. Our firm did that several years ago. So OSTA issued a report of findings that we filed on the land records to keep our OSTA's report alive. That expired. We resurrected that about three months ago, and they reinstated our report of findings, and I think Michael has a copy of that for the record. So we're fine with OSTA. The other portion of the review process on the state highway level is Department of Transportation. Department of Transportation issues what they call an encroachment permit. Encroachment permit allows you to do construction and carve driveways out into the state highway. When we did our previous application, we were about 95, 96% through the approval process with the DOT when the project was put on hold. We started resurrecting that process again, so we're actively working with the DOT. We don't anticipate there to be really any changes to any of our design. The signal was approved by OSTA. OSTA's a driving agency. When they approve it, the DOT has to meet the conditions of the OSTA approval and then determine that technically you meet those conditions. So we're going through that process. Again, not site plan related, but just wanted to inform you where we are at that process.
So on your signal, you said you had a right turn going south, but you don't have a left turn going north?
No, we do have a left turn north.
Both, yeah.
Yeah, we have a left turn. Yeah, there's a left turn lane, a dedicated left turn lane going this way.
No, on Route 10.
You mean turning in?
Left turn into. Oh, no, not on this, on this drive here, there's not. The right and.
Yeah, he's stuck with.
No, because for Dorset, we have a left turn lane into Dorset.
On 10 and 202.
He's talking about northbound.
Yeah, northbound.
Northbound on 10, yeah, I believe there, I believe it's delineated for that. We don't have it on, it wouldn't be shown on this plan, this is the site plan.
But do you remember if you did get approval to have a left turn lane? Because I was wondering what that does for, are we doing it within the existing Route 10, or are we changing the width of Route 10 there?
Well, this does show the, this does show the alignment here. You can see that, there's a dedicated left turn lane here. Yeah, there is, there is work being done on the alignment of Route 10 here. Yes. And we actually did provide the latest off-site roadway improvement plans to staff. It's like a 36 or 30, how many pages, 37 pages, something? It's, yeah. DOT is, you have to live that life to believe in what it's like to coordinate with it, but we have, I think there's like 36 pages. We spent two and a half years working with the DOT folks on design of the roadway, and we were like, again, like 96% in, but this, this alignment that you see on your layout plan here does reflect what would be proposed for the corridor.
So the retaining wall, the cars that are in that impervious parking area, they are how far below the road, Route 10?
I got a cool picture of that. Yeah, we did, here's a little concept that we, a few concepts that we looked at with Design Review Committee. This is what we refer to as our preferred streetscape concept, and this is a cross-section that'll show you the relative position of that car, the berm and the retaining wall at the pedestrian level. So the car that would be parked here, for example, facing Hot Metal Street would be this car here. So your elevation difference between the ground at the car and the sidewalk is, I think it's nominally about three feet. So the retaining wall would be two feet high, two and a half feet high, be a little bit of an elevation berm here, and then it would be landscaped. If you could go back to your landscape plan, Mike. So there's a grade differential there. And again, what we tried to do is keep it at a pedestrian level so that we would have, yeah, one up higher than that, I think. Yep, there you go. So this would be, yeah, this would be, if you look at the landscape plan, you can see there's tree plantings, and then there's a number of shrubs all along here. So the shrubs would provide the screening integrated with that gentle berm that we've got here. And then the wall would be integrated at the edge of the sidewalk, a couple feet back.
You didn't happen to do one of those as far as the building, going from the view from a Route 10 car to what they would see of the?
No. I mean, if you were to look at this projected eyesight here, or this guy looking over the top of the car, that would continue at a certain distance. I mean, you're going to see the building.
You're going to see the building, but you're going to see the roof. You're going to see pretty high, you're not going to see low on the building.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you're going to, you're going to see the building, I mean, there's no question. I'm not going to tell you you're not.
We're not trying to make the building disappear, I'm just asking.
Yeah, but you're not going to, yeah, you're not going to see the lower portion of the building because that, if you're in a car, you're going to be, your eyesight in a car, you're three and a half feet above the road surface elevation. This guy standing here is like, his eyes are around five.
Right.
He's a tall guy.
No, because, you know, driving down now, you think it's pretty low. And it's, so it's kind of deceptive that, because actually you're.
It is level for the first, you know, 150 feet or so, and then it kind of climbs up right behind where the old building was. You don't really realize it, but there's pretty.
All right, well, maybe that offsets, too, then, that incline, because the building is on a higher, so maybe you will see more of the building than I thought.
Well, they're grading back, though.
Yeah, you're going to, you're going to cut that grading down behind the building, but the building itself is going to be.
Behind the building.
It's going to be a few feet higher than the existing grade, yeah. And I think we actually, there's, the grading plan will actually show what the belt is on that.
Read it on here.
For example, on this here. For example, on this here, the first floor elevation is 185.50. And if you look at the contour, here's the one, right in the middle of the building, it's about elevation 185.
And what's the road?
Average grade. Road is down at one, at seventy-nine, seventy-eight.
That's about six feet.
So, for example, if you're looking here, these contours, if you look at your GR plan, these contours here represent the existing condition elevations. Here's a 186 contour. Mike, can you put on the screen? GR one? Yeah, so, right in here, the existing contours like elevation 186 and the grade of the building is 185.5. So, nominally, the building is at the same grade as the field that's behind there. Now, you do have, you know, a six foot or eight foot grade difference between this corner of the building and that corner of the building. You don't really, you don't think so when you're out there driving, but that's really the way it is. Yes, for example, here, on this corner of the building, the existing grade is elevation 191. On this corner of the building, the existing grade is 181. So, there's ten foot difference between this side and this side.
All right, but it will all be 185 when you're done?
Yeah, so this, yeah, exactly, so... You're gonna be five feet lower on this corner and then on this corner, you're gonna be eight feet...
All right, so it's six feet above the current Route 10.
Six or seven feet, yeah, yeah. So, six, you know, seven, six feet in, 250 feet is really not that far. I mean, if, well, I wish I were six feet tall, but, see here, six feet in 200 feet, it's, there's a difference, yeah. You'll see it.
Any questions?
Well, it might be for the next guy. Signage is the next guy, I think.
Yeah, with that, we're certainly available to answer any questions. Let me have Ed do his presentation and then if you have any questions between the two of us and Tony and Chris, we can answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thanks.
Signage is on this.
That's why I was gonna ask, because there is signage on here.
They said the design we did today, they're not part of the signage.
Good. Are we actually...
My name is Ed Pepin, I'm an architect and principal of the firm Pepin Associates Architects LLC in Bloomfield, Connecticut. I was not involved in the 2012 original approval, but I've worked with Big Y for thirty-plus years. So, I'm gonna walk you through the, the building, the building architecture. We have tried to stay consistent with, with the approval from 2012 for the most part, substantially, I should say. And, and Guy mentioned that, you know, the footprint has changed slightly and it has, but the architecture in general is, is very, very consistent with what was approved previously. Real quick, just to sort of walk you around the building and, and we had, we didn't infill the, the center of the store. We're still working through some layouts with Big Y on equipment, et cetera. Suffice it to say, it will have all the, the features of a, of a modern supermarket that you would expect and, and consistent with the, the program that Big Y has, has provided elsewhere. But this plan, plan shows the, the building shell, so to speak. And just, just a couple things, as Guy had mentioned, you know, there's two, two loading bags here. This, this bump out is sort of the receiving loading area for the store. On the opposite side of that, that bump out is, is the compactor, the generator and the, sort of the quick connect. Mobile generator parks in, in this, this location and attaches to this equipment, which provides, you know, full, full store operation in the event of a long-term outage. The, the main entrance to the store is, is on this side, there are, there are actually two overhead doors, glass overhead doors that open and provide nearly year-round direct access into the produce aisle. Big Y sort of markets that as a, as a sort of farmer's market type scenario. Those doors have an air curtain and are, and are open except in the very worst weather conditioned days. There's also a, a main entry to the store in this location. Checkouts will be, will be roughly in this sort of bump out area in the front. And there's a, there's a exit door out of those checkouts here. And there's a secondary entrance, sort of cover the other half of the parking lot in this location, location here. And then there's a bottom, this small bottom return area underneath the canopy in this area here. Sidewalk across the entire storefront, there's a, there's a pitched roof canopy cover over that entire sidewalk and, and that canopy returns on either end for some distance down the sidewalk. As I, as I mentioned, you know, I wasn't involved in the original approval. This, just very quickly, is, is the storefront design from the original approval of 2012. And as I mentioned, you know, we've, we've sort of followed that, that design very consistently, so...
That was the old, yeah.
Which is the old and which is the new?
I'm sorry? This, this is the proposed new.
Okay.
As I mentioned during design review, the, the print came out a little, little dark when they mounted it to the board, but in any event, this is the east elevation, the storefront elevation, main entry down in this area, you know, underneath and highlighted by that, that tower. Secondary entrance here, highlighted by this smaller tower element. Pitch, pitched roof canopy across the entire length, architectural shingles, which is the spray material. The canopy, the canopy tower fascia material is, is synthetic plaster. I'll show you all these materials in a minute. Canopy structure is enclosed with these fiberglass column enclosures. Windows are a white aluminum storefront framing material. Checkouts, again, are, are behind these, this, this window area here. These are those overhead doors that open up directly into the produce area. There'll be a cafe seating area at that far end, behind those windows there. And this is that bottle return area, bottle return area here. This is one of the sidewalls. The opposite sidewall is very, very similar. The canopy returns for some length down the sidewall. This is the loading dock area that's set back. It's not, it's not gray in color. It's the same color as, as this, as this wall all the way around the building. So, just showing you the proposed building materials.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Where's your rooftop equipment?
Rooftop equipment is...
Do you have any?
What's that?
Do you have any rooftop?
Yeah, so the, so the roof is, so this, the roof area is, is a, you know, a flat roof.
Mm-hmm.
Generally pitches from, from front to rear.
Down? Down? Pitches down?
Pitches down.
Yeah, okay.
From, from, from front to rear. We have, I don't know whether we'll have a, a roof drain line usually right about here. So, we have roof drains that collect water, pipe it through the building out into the storm systems. Rooftop equipment, there's a number of RTUs that are, that are generally, generally located in the center of the roof.
Okay.
There is also, as far as per Big Y's design, we have a, an electrical, we call it penthouse. It's, it's a, it's a sort of a trailer size structure or a house that, that sits in this corner. There's also a refrigeration penthouse. So, there's electrical and refrigeration equipment that are, that are located in, in those, in those units.
And that's not shown on the elevations?
We have, well, it is shown, not on the rendering, but it is shown on the...
So, how high?
On the drawings that are in your, that are in your package.
Yeah, that's why I was asking, how high are they?
Yeah, they're about, so those are those, these are those penthouse units there. They're about eight feet tall or so.
And they act as their own screening? Is that the idea?
Yeah, so, so it does, it does act, or, or in this, in this particular case, especially from that corner where we've got the, the residential unit to the south, southwest, it does act to, to screen that entire roof, the roof area from that, from that vantage point.
Okay.
So, that, those are these two units here.
And, and where is that in relation to the roof?
Southwest?
No, but the...
It's, it's down, it's right in this...
No, but the, the front, so, so from the front...
It's from the front, here's the front.
Yeah, so the, the front roof where it goes extended, the, the sloped roof.
Let me show you in this, let me show you in this view. So, here's, here's the front corner. This is the, the south elevation. Okay, here, here. This, this corner is right here. These penthouse units are back in this corner here. So, relationship of front to the rear, it's as far back as we can get it.
All right, but that sloped roof actually does not cover the, the flat roof. It's actually lower than the flat roof.
Yes, so, so this parapet line maintains consistent from front to back. The roof is pitching at about a quarter inch per foot from front to back. So, these are actually set down a little bit. I said they're body tall, but when you get, you know, their actual elevation is down a couple of feet from, from this front corner. If that makes sense to you.
But they would be visible from, from the back lot.
Okay. Kind of, sort of?
So, so they would be pretty visible from the condos behind?
They will be visible from the condos behind.
All right, have we addressed any kind of screening for any of that?
Well, the thing is, you know, they're, they're essentially a, a solid screen material in and of themselves. You know, they, they're, they're, they're a coordinated metal enclosure. I don't know what we'd be screening other than, or would you be creating, we'd be creating a screen which would essentially be the same as, as what's there now.
It's like a wall.
No, it's not a wall.
It's, it's, it's not a wall.
Because they're units, yeah, they're three units.
I thought you said, I thought you said there was a, like a trailer or a...
Yeah, I mean, if you can, if you can picture a, a rectangular box, that's essentially what they are, but from, from, from this elevation or from, from the condominium elevation, I don't know how we'd be screening other than with something very sim, that would essentially look very similar from that distance. I mean, it can be done, but I, I don't know that there'd be any real advantage to doing it.
This is something I couldn't think of.
It's good, just that they're sealed, they're watertight.
Yeah. No, but it's like having a trailer truck on top of your building, okay? That's your see from a distance.
It's a, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's like a packaged rooftop unit, for, for example. I mean, you know?
A lot of times you build the parapet up.
But we do often ask that they be screened from the public.
Yeah.
And then in particular, that, that condo unit has had, has been attacked all around it from when they originally bought, or, I guess it's not condos, that was part of And I just remember that the impact we had on the neighbors down was stop and shop and the noise from the, you know, stop and shop, they weren't happy either. And from an operations, yeah, that actually brings it up. From an operations standpoint, is there any, what time do trucks normally come into the, to the back?
Yeah, they typically have a night crew, you know, so usually the loads are there before close.
Before close is what time?
So, typical hours are 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. That's about probably ninety percent of the stores are doing that. Some of my clothes are thirty minutes before typically, they're open by seven and then the deliveries, and we can arrange them, you know, but typically they're gonna be there before that night crew that's showing up at 10:00. So, 8:00, 9:00, somewhere around there. They don't, there's not a lot of late deliveries anymore. We don't run 7:24 hour stores, so, but we've made arrangements with the truckers. We have stores that are someone in neighborhoods and then they don't want, they say by 8:00 PM, you have to be there and all that, so it's something to be done. Okay.
I thought that was all, it could be a site plan.
Five years ago.
Yes. Tony, can I follow? All right, so, just real quick, just to run you through the materials that, that we're, we're indicating around the building or primarily on the storefront. And I'm gonna hold this while I do that. So, this is a rendering of the, of the storefront. So, the canopy fascia material and the material around the tower are these two synthetic plaster materials. The darker color is utilized around the, the large tower. The lighter color is utilized, you know, everywhere else. The picture depicting the, the gray shingle material, the brick, the cast stone banding and the, and the stone is reflected as the, the masonry materials below the canopy level. So, brick, there's, there's a banding system, not really greatly reflected in this rendering, but there's a banding system, well, the, the sill material underneath the windows. That's all this cast stone here. And then below the windows is a stone, a stone base that runs around the storefront. This is intended to be the color that is, is painted, the, are the precast wall panels that run both sides and rear of the buildings is painted this material. And that white metal is the color of the, of the aluminum storefront system.
So, the stone runs as a, runs all the way around the front?
Runs, it runs all the way around at the storefront, not, not, not all four sides. So, I think that takes care of my, my portion of the presentation, unless you have any other further questions.
It's nice. No, it's, it's nice. I like it other than the trailers.
Did you get feedback from the Design Review?
Um, yeah.
Design Review issued a favorable recommendation on this application.
Given that the signage is not part of it.
Oh, so that...
Yeah, they would have to come back to visit the signage. This really is for the site plan development.
Yeah, so you, you mentioned signage before I stood up. So, what that rendering and our drawing show is sort of Big Y's standard full, full signage package. We understand that that's not gonna, that's not gonna comply with your regulations. We're gonna have to scale that back considerably. What I think will essentially be, will be able to ask for is essentially what's on that main tower will, will sort of fall within your, your area regulations. But we, we need to revisit that and come back before you and, or before Design, Design Review as well.
Are you planning a pharmacy within this?
No pharmacy.
Okay, because that has signage.
And same thing with lighting? Is that something you would come back for?
Parking lot lighting?
Yeah, we were, yeah, again, for the record, can I ask? We were hoping that maybe you could condition the approval upon staff review of a detailed photometric plan. I don't know if your regulations would allow that or not. I certainly would defer to staff on that, but our intention would be just to mimic the street lighting along the state highway to match what you've got in town now and if you have two standards, whatever standard would, is currently being used, certainly. And then a comparable lighting plan for the parking lot and integrated with whatever lighting we have in the, under the can... the canopy and on the building itself. So we've got one integrated lighting photometric plan, and if we're favorable, if you would look favorably upon that, we'd love to, just get it with staff, if that's possible.
Wasn't there a photometric plan in the original approval?
No, the original approval didn't have that in there, it showed, uh, details of the lighting fixtures and placement of them, but not a detailed photometric plan.
Is that in our regs now?
Your regs are, uh, do not have a lighting requirement. Really, what we've, we've pushed people is, is that, um, you know, dealing with light trespass to avoid light trespass in this sort of instances. So, you know, you could say submit a plan demonstrating that there's no light trespass from this development.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's reasonable, right? Kevin, you-
Uh, uh, materials man there.
Yes.
The little balls are made of what?
A little what?
The little balls on the building.
Yeah, so those are, those are lighting scotch fixtures.
Oh, interesting.
So, um-
They're not-
Target balls.
Up or down?
Um, they get, they, there's just a, it projects sort of a round-
Like a shield.
Oh, so it just kinda glows.
It's just, it's like a halo, it just projects a halo, uh, lighting, lighting effect on the canopy itself. Very, very low level, it's just decorative more than anything.
Can I say, on that screen here, so we built a store a year or two ago in Marlborough, and they had similar concerns about the mechanical houses, and, you know, as you see, decided to build and has that brick red. We actually painted them the same color and they sort of disappeared, so it's, you know, when you see it, you won't see like the brick red turning white, because these things typically come in white, so we've actually matched into the color of the buildings, so that helps.
Question is, visual but also noise.
Yeah, I could tell you, I know a lot about those systems. So our refrigeration system that's in there, it's a low RPM system, it runs at twelve hundred RPM. Honestly, if you were standing on the ground on the side of the building, you will not hear them, and you, we have multiple stores with this setup, the Marlborough one's a perfect example, looking at it, the back left corner, very similar to this layout, you can't hear them running.
The, the electrical penthouse has no noise at all. And the refrigeration penthouse has some compressors in it, but like you said, they're all, they're all running-
Do B measures?
We could get those, we could easily get them, and then even the roof condensers, we don't use typical roof condensers, it's a sort of a special type of system where it's not running high RPMs and all that type of stuff. Livid fans.
Would it be less than seventy-five dB?
At the ground, we're actually, I could, I could, we could verify that, I, I, you won't hear them on the ground, that, again, just as an example, is our Marlborough location. If you were standing on the side of the building, you don't hear any roof noise at all, including the air conditioning systems.
As far as your, um, staff review at the end, if you could get a photo of the, the Marlborough store?
Sure.
If you guys can take a look at that. From the viewpoint of the, the apartments, the Ely apartments.
We'll take some decibel readings at that same location for you and send them over.
Yeah, give the staff.
Probably paint it tan before I paint it orange.
So which color is the side of the building?
Yes, the dark, the dark-
I'm going from this panel. Is it the one in the middle?
I think on your small red eye.
Or is it the, the smaller one?
Yeah.
Again, that's the side elevation there.
Yeah.
Runs the same color all the way around.
Yeah, well, that's what the site, we were saying when you'd color the-
Yeah.
The units.
Yeah.
Okay, are you ready to do anything? Staff has provided us a recommendation. What is your timing, I mean, this is something you need a site plan approval so you can-
We're eager to start, if I may say.
We wouldn't wanna be holding it up, would we? They might change their mind again.
We know the feeling.
Kevin, you think?
You want me to make a motion here? I, I move to approve application nineteen forty of Tony Capola, agent, Big Y Foods, Inc., owner, for a site plan amendment for the construction of a new retail grocery store per plan submitted on the property located at thirteen thirteen, thirteen forty-nine, and unassigned addressed Hot Meadow Street.
I saw that.
Very clever. It's gonna be down to ten. The approval of the site plan amendment is subject to the following conditions of approval. One, an administrative zoning permit is required for construction activities. Two, pre-construction meeting is required with the zoning enforcement officer prior to start of the site work. Three, applicant is to provide a copy of the excavation permit for, um, CT DOT District Four for the issuance of a building permit. Four, applicant is to provide two sets of milars for signature by the chair prior to the issuance of an administrative zoning permit. One set is to be filed on the land records of Sheet LS one. The second set is to be filed with the engineering department of Sheets LA one, LS one, and UT one. Five, applicant is to provide two paper sets of the final plans for signature by the chair prior to the issuance of administrative zoning permit. Six, applicant is to provide written approval from Aquarian Water concerning domestic water connections for the site structure prior to the issuance of a, a building permit. Seven, as noted in the twenty twelve approval, applicant is to provide access easements to the properties to the south. Eight, the commission authorizes staff to approve minor changes to grading utility locations and landscaping on their behalf. Said requests for changes are to be made in writing and approved by staff prior to implementation in the field. Nine, a photometric plan to demonstrate no light trespass will be, um, subject to review by, will be submitted and subject to review by staff. And ten, I just want to note that the application does not include signage.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
Do you want anything on the amendment on the roof, or no?
Um, I'm gonna leave that to staff review.
Okay. I'm good.
Okay. You can always come in for an amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's five, nothing, thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe a second, actually.
It was you. Donna seconded it. No, you did.
Yeah.
No, no, she did.
Oh, she did, okay. I didn't hear it, sorry.
Jackie.
The other Jackie.
Okay. We have application nineteen forty-one and nineteen forty-two are for the same sorts of, same properties really, so. We're talking about a permit for a sign, a site plan amendment.
Although they have different owners though, don't they?
I'm not used to looking over there.
Okay.
Good evening, Teri Ann Hahn, Principal, LADA PC, we're the land planners for the project. There are two separate applications, so I'll do one at a time, if that's okay. The first one, uh, just for orientation purposes on this drawing, uh, this is for a freestanding sign for Holloway's Plaza itself. One of the things I would note is that Holloway's Plaza is actually consisting of, of a number of properties that, um, have little regard for how the building is set up. So, what we're looking at is this large property here, which deals with the, um, sort of, after the, the building starts moving, it just, it's generally goes straight like where Harvest Cafe is and Bosco's and all that, very down there. But one of the things that does occur is the existing islands out in the front, uh, there's very limited area to be used, and that the island actually goes beyond the property line, is in the right of way. So the sign itself, um, has a single location where we can actually put this, it's in the, there's an existing pole out there with a light, um, on it, um, there's a combination of like three different poles, one of them, they, two of them have lights, one of them we will take down and pull that out, um, that would then become the sign location itself. So there'll be no new vertical elements out there, we'll pull that pole down, put a new one on. The sign itself, um, the style is consistent with, uh, um, the colors on the building itself and the, the sign that, that's set up, it's a freestanding sign that meets the requirements for the zoning, where you have a little planter box at the bottom, uh, and it will allow for almost four feet underneath the sign for, for a site line. That's kind of where we're at.
Okay. Design review did?
Design review reviewed both, uh, application nineteen forty-one and application nineteen forty-two, and issued favorable recommendations on both of these applications.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, what's missing from them is the individual names on each one, and is there a standard for that?
The, the standard is going to be the size is a maximum of six inches high, um, so there are a wide range of tenants within the, the building, front and back, um, so they'll, they'll be listed, um, but it's quite possible that they won't be the same list in the front and the back, that's how many tenants there are, so, um, it's-
But the same color?
Same color.
Oh, black. Yeah, yeah, okay.
All right, so you're not giving them options to do their own logos and all kinds of-
There's, it's only six inches.
Black.
There'd be-
Lettering.
And where, so this is going by the road, so you're expecting people to read this?
Uh, it's, uh, okay. Over, over the years, uh, I mean, there, there's a lot of signage on the building itself, but I think the idea is that, um, people understand that now you have come up upon this shopping center, um, the idea being that, you know, I'm where Harvest Cafe is, or I'm, I'm something like, you know, something of that nature, so it's, it's, uh, it's relatively, we hope, slow, as you're coming around the corner, it's gonna get slower, I think, with the Big Y application, and, so, um, it, it's really just an acknowledgement of their existence.
Is there a, I can't see what is in the, the brown, the top, but it, can you not make it, the Holloway's Plaza a little bigger so that you have that as your identifying?
Uh, well, where it says right now Holloway's A Fine Center, we want that to say Holloway's Plaza, so that, that's what the first one will say.
Right, 'cause Holloway's is actually not in this plaza.
Correct, but they're located, over here have their own sign, so, yeah. Well, we could make it a little taller, or, you know, to Holloway's Plaza, but we're just trying to provide as much, um, room for the tenants as we could, within the, the sign requirements.
And safety wise, is that enough space for a, a driver? The space from the base to the actual sign?
The, the convention is four feet, yeah.
It is, okay.
Yep, yeah, 'cause it, you know, when you're in your car, and, and it's-
I looked at it today, so that was my concern.
Right, and it's, your car, the cars over here, we're not really within the sightlines of any of those entrances, um, but just, we wanted to be safe.
Sure.
Yeah.
Kevin, anything?
Okay, I'm not sold that, I'm, I'm not against the application, I'm just not sold it's gonna have a, a benefit, but, but I'm not, I'm not opposed to it.
Okay, Jackie, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Do I have a motion? Okay. I would like to make a motion to approve application nineteen dash forty-one, right? Forty-one? Of LADA PC Land Planners, Agent Holloway's Incorporated Owner, for a site plan amendment and a sign permit for a sign on the property located at thirteen ninety-six Hot Meadow Street. This is assessor's map I zero four, block four three nine, lot zero zero four B, it's zone B two. The approval of the sign permit is subject to the following conditions of approval. Number one, an administrative zoning permit is required for the installation of signage.
Second?
Second by Donna. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's five, nothing, thank you. Okay, second, uh, application?
The second sign, um, is located in this area here, there was an existing sign there, um, at that, so this is a replacement of that sign. The sign is actually not in the island, 'cause the island is actually across the property line, um, there are existing bollards out there, that, as to where the sign was. The original sign was substantially taller than the one that we're proposing here, because we need to meet the current requirements. So, the, it is similar in shape and size, so that it, and color as it matches everything else that is in the area.
And that's closer to the pharmacy?
Uh, yes, it's right opposite the pharmacy.
Okay.
And this owner is the same owner?
No.
Okay, but we still call it Holloway's Plaza, so the whole plaza is Holloway's, even though Holloway's isn't in it?
You know, it's funny, I mean, I call it Holloway's Plaza, 'cause it's always been Holloway's, I mean, since way back when my dad used to stand out there with Mrs. Antonio and be Mr. Santa Claus, um, so back in, you know, early seventies, so, um, I don't know that anybody else but any of us who've been around for a long time has called it Holloway's Plaza, um, but that's generally, you know, that's one of the-
Well, I was just wondering if you're trying to encompass both buildings with the same top label. Well, actually, once upon a time was it not College Highway Plaza?
College Highway Shopping Center.
Shopping Center, yeah.
And the old timers call it Hoskins Crossing, or Hoskins Plaza, or something like that.
Or Westover.
So this one would not have the Holloway's Plaza, and this is Simsbury Pharmacy under Hoskins.
Okay, is that Simsbury?
Yes, that's Simsbury Pharmacy.
That's this pharmacy.
Yep.
Okay. Donna?
Do you want to make a mo- is everybody done?
Well, I actually do have one more, and how does this tie into the actual Holloway sign?
Now, the Holloway's sign is located-
Yeah, but is it similar?
No, the Holloway's plot signs are, it's a-
Monument sign?
Monument sign, yep.
Okay.
So, it has the same kind of graphics, and it has the same colors and everything, it's just a, it's not a freestanding, you know, list sign, it's a si- it's a single.
So color wise, all three of them are actually related now?
And they're, not only that, but they match the color system that's on the building, 'cause there was a unified sign plan for the building itself, and this all matches that.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'm gonna make a motion to approve application nineteen forty-two of, um, LADA PC Land Planners Agent, Robert C. Kevorkian Owner, for a site plan amendment and a sign permit to replace a damaged sign in the same location on the property located at fourteen oh four through fourteen eighteen, Hot Meadow Street. The approval of the sign permit is subject to the following conditions. Number one, an administrative zoning permit is required for installation of signage.
Second?
Second by Jackie. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's five, nothing, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have commission business. We have three things here, one is correspondence, um, regulations update. I was gonna suggest that we have a meeting next Monday to-
A workshop.
Have a workshop, is that?
It's fine.
Donna, I mean, Jackie?
I'll check.
Okay. Kevin?
Checking.
If you're not available the twenty-third, we, we also have the thirtieth, 'cause we have five Mondays in September.
Okay.
Is this a suggestion?
The thirtieth.
May need them both.
Maybe them both, that's right.
Meet somewhere else.
We had, you know, it's been a month since we, we've done this.
I, I think we probably do need both.
Just meet somewhere.
But let's, let's plan on it anyway, and, um, we'll send out a-
Can always cancel.
We can always cancel, we can send out an agenda and see if people can make it.
Do you guys want six thirty, seven o'clock, what would you prefer?
I think six thirty is good.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I'm good with six thirty.
You're coming.
You're having, but it's okay.
You'll have to leave early. Okay, six thirty.
Okay.
Sacrifices I make for you.
Okay, and that's where we are.
And what about number three?
What about this bond reduction request?
So Ugo planned to be here tonight, he comes up from New Jersey, so I'm kinda concerned, 'cause he definitely confirmed with me, but, um- with me. But nevertheless, I'm comfortable enough, I go out there pretty much every week and meet with him, and we go over what's been going on to the site. So as you'll recall, back in, I think, January, you guys put a bond in place to cover the site improvements that weren't done, so they could start getting COs on their apartments and their townhouses. Since that time, they've done a substantial amount of work as far as the site improvements out there. And you should have in the memo towards the back, that original description that they had provided to us with that $1.14 million amount. And basically, Ugo's gone through and put what's been complete and what's left to be completed. This is substantially accurate. I've been out with him, like I said, every week for pretty much the entire summer. So the last time I was out there was two weeks ago, and they've done no additional work since then, so this is pretty up to date.
I went today.
Yeah.
It looks worlds different.
Totally different, yeah. If you haven't been out there and driven around, again, it sits so far back, and there's those buildings in the front of you, would never know what they've done out there, but...
It doesn't feel like a construction site, like it did the last time.
Yeah. Yep.
So what are we reducing it to?
They're looking for a reduction to $498,268.
And have they done the final paving on all the roads?
Not all the roads, a majority of them, a good percentage of them are completed. They've been moving right along, so they own...
So they have the base everywhere?
They have the base everywhere. The final pavement, have you went on the site, has been sort of done up to the clubhouse. And right now, what they're working on is the townhouses that are kind of to the northeast and the back, so that's, that's just their first coat down there. Once they get it all framed, and they don't have heavy equipment going back there, they go in and they do their final paving and striping.
Half a million dollars is okay to cover all that?
Yeah, yeah. There's actually, it's substantially more complete than you would think when you go out there. Yep.
And then there's just soil, land that needs to be moved to the right.
Yeah.
Is that, that's just about it, as far as what you can see.
Yeah.
Well, there's also construction of the north commercial property.
That's key to number of units.
Yeah, so that's all been graded and is ready to go, but they don't actually have to start constructing that larger retail space until they're at a certain number of permits pulled. They're getting close. I think they're within 28, I think, was the number. They have 28 more permits that they can pull before they have to start that construction on that building. So you'll probably see with, I would say probably within the next two to three months, something happening with that next commercial building.
With the plan we approved for that commercial building, could a bank go in there? Is there, is there any way they could actually put a drive-through in that building?
I'd have to look and see, I'm not sure.
Not that we need more banks, but I'm just wondering.
There's enough space.
There's probably enough space to do it.
There's enough space in there.
It's the larger of the two, right? It was around 5,000?
But when you drive in there, it looks very small.
Yes.
Well, I mean, the building, the frame that's up right now, that's like 3,000 and change.
Yeah.
The other one's around...
8,200 square feet is the next one to be built. The current one that was built was 3,500 square feet.
So it's more than twice as big, but it just, it looks like a very small lot when it looks at.
It does, yeah, it does.
It looked pretty big to me, yeah. I looked at both of them, anyway.
Empty, it looks pretty empty.
Anyway, let's, let's make a motion to reduce their bond. I think they've done what they've said.
They have, yep.
Pretty much.
All right, well, I will move that we reduce the bond on the ridge at Talcott Mountain from a million 1,4276 to 498,268, 268.
Second?
Second by Donna. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries five, nothing. Thank you.
I missed the 30 cents.
Now we're down to your freelance part.
How do I say that? I move, we adjourn?
Second? Who's gonna second?
Oh, second.
Donna second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
I'm gonna send you guys with homework. Don't lose it. This is just...
Our binder?